Okay, Granby Planning Board, Monday, March 6, 2023. 5:03, opening the meeting. Administrative, we've got some minutes to approve?
So the board has minutes from September 12th and September 19th. That was just to clarify. I think it was September 19th minutes.
I've got copies.
That, everyone should have a copy of them.
Oh, you just put this out, Ken, I'm sorry.
Yeah. The September 12th and September 19th minutes, there was a question about the September 19th minute that had been clarified.
That was clarified at our last meeting. So with that being said, if everybody's reviewed them, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the Planning Board minutes for September 12th, 2022, as written.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next set of minutes, I'll entertain a motion.
Has everybody reviewed?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the Planning Board's September 19th, 2022 minutes as written.
We have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yours, I'm just gonna check to see if there's any correspondence.
Nothing.
Nothing? You already looked through it?
Nothing I saw of any use.
Okay. New business? Okay, approve the, and sign with this, approve? Well, that shouldn't be approved. Should be, uh... Sign the decision for the, for the hearing to consider the petition for Kim's Pet Resort LLC, the applicant, which we went through that at our last meeting.
Yeah.
And we have a file copy. Has everybody reviewed it?
Yeah. I have, uh, wait a minute. Well, I guess we can sign, but we gotta, you have, need to sign. It has to be four board members, right?
For the special permit needed. The board can also choose to have the chair sign. We've done that in the past, and I'll just formulate a signature page for the chair. He can sign it.
Yeah, but shouldn't we get this signed right away in case somebody wants to appeal, or?
Yeah, and it just gives me to, yeah, because the thing is, you need the four signatures because it is a super majority for the special permit. However, the board can take action to, if Anita is not showing tonight, you know, you can wait till she shows up, which she does, but if she doesn't, the board can take action to allow the chair to sign on behalf of the board.
Okay.
Uh, I thought I saw she was attending.
I did, I saw.
I saw that as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we can, the three of us can sign.
Yeah. And then you just get, need a signature.
Okay. How many copies?
Just the one, and then it needs to be filed with the chair, or the, or... I have another copy here at the board, too, also.
Yeah, we should sign two copies so we, hang on.
Well, I've got my copy here and Jim's got his. Let's, let's just table this, give it a few minutes, so that if we vote to approve it, then we're... Thank you. Okay. How is everybody? Everybody good?
What?
I said, how is everybody?
Good.
Good. Are we gonna do some discussion on the cannabis?
Yeah, let's, let's do that while we're... I'm not gonna give it too much time because tonight's a short night for me.
I'm just gonna shoot her a text and see.
Have you had a chance to do any more on the cannabis?
So I prepared for the board, I was able to find two, two examples from municipalities, not, they're not similar to Granby, but to, of the way that they're presenting, how the town has collected revenues to date. And you'll see, I provided an example of Provincetown and East Hampton, here in the Pioneer Valley. East Hampton has a max 12, 12 establishments, eight establishments in town, and they have all eight. And you'll see, based on the handout that I provided, this is up to March 31st, 2022, where in that year, fiscal year, they collected $874,020.79. And that was both a mix of excise taxes and impact fees.
Excise tax and what, impact fees?
Impact fees.
Okay.
So you'll see, they did a, a good job of describing how a town may be able to collect funds from the transactions, as far as what in state law, how that kind of mechanism works.
Okay. What, what kind of facilities are they? Type of grow facilities?
Inso has both a grow facility and a, and a...
Dispensary?
Dispensary, yep. Verb is herb, is, that actually is across the street from where I live, and that is a dispensary. It's right on Cottage Street in the downtown. Holistic and Liberty is a dispensary. They're located on Route 10, going towards Manhattan.
So Mike, again, what, what type of grow facilities are they? Are they field grow facilities, or are they all indoor?
Indoor.
Who's allowing outdoor field?
There are towns that have permitted, but they haven't yet, they're not in operation yet, so I have, at least in the Pioneer Valley that I'm aware of, there have been towns that have permitted outdoor grow via their greenhouses. So they have the ability to develop greenhouses on their property and grow cannabis. They're not yet constructed. I think what ends up happening is that they're, all of a sudden, and we're in this weird period where a lot of the, the grow facilities are slowing down, the development of the grow facilities are slowing down, just because I, maybe there's...
It's been a saturation.
Saturation in the market. North Hampton closed a dispensary.
There's been a couple of them that are, dispensaries that have closed due to saturation, yeah.
Due to saturation. So I haven't yet been able to find, I'm sure there exists, I called the Cannabis Control Commission to see if they had some examples, I didn't get a response in time, but examples of communities that have allowed for outdoor grow. As you're probably aware, and as in 2018, when we went through the process of creating this model, we suggested that they all, if you were planning to do any sort of product manufacturing or cultivation, that they would happen in your industrial zone, right? Maybe existing mill buildings or warehouses. So the greenhouse idea is relatively novel, and to my knowledge, in the Pioneer Valley, there's two communities that have approved a greenhouse outdoor grow, but it hasn't yet been constructed. So, you know, I think the understanding for the board probably is, because I think there was a question that came up with regards to any sort of economic development impact. As you can see, there is impact, you know, based on the excise taxes through those transactions with the Commonwealth. Things are changing with regards to how the Cannabis Control Commission is overseeing municipal approvals, in that, as Bob mentioned, something about impact fees, those are not necessarily being, what's the word? They're not being included anymore in the host community agreements, just because, I think back in 2018, when these were being permitted initially, people were like, what are the impacts going to be? And they're finding that the impacts are minimal. So the, the, the impact fees are now, the, there's, there's a legal microscope on the impact fees in the host community agreements. The excise tax is something that still occurs, that's all handled through the Department of Revenue, but, yeah, that's kind of the mechanism with regards to find the monies coming to the town for that, because that was a question that came up at the last meeting. You know, I think if the board, I think as I mentioned to the board at the previous meeting, it's whether or not the board wants to adopt or look at any additional zoning regulations that are, because I mentioned that the particular language in your bylaw is relegated to like five, five different set clauses, which you set your zoning districts for which you allow those particular uses, but, you know, I think that if the board wants to, look at other types of protections that I think a lot of other communities are adopting, like what to include with your plans, and how much additional scrutiny the board would want over some of those particular application requirements.
So here's, here's a, a thought, that, something I've picked up on recently is that some of these grow facilities, indoor grow facilities, are in areas where there is a, a low cost, or a lower cost of electricity. These facilities suck up a lot of electricity, the indoor grow facilities, a lot of electricity. And so that's why you're seeing them pop up in places that have their own...
Hoyoke, Chicopee.
Chicopee, that have, that generate their own electricity. So I, and, and because they're starting to become a saturate, a saturation of dispensaries, where some of them are closing, based on demand, or lack of demand, I can see where, if, if you're not running one of these facilities in a, in a, a community like Hoyoke or Chicopee that produces electricity, I can see facilities, or growers wanting to, to move to the suburbs and say, look, let's, let's, let's farm it, let's use natural, natural sunlight to grow. Now granted, some of these are, are in real confined areas, where they're growing it for medical purposes, and they're, I can't see them doing it outside of, of a facility that's, that they can manage the cleanliness and that, and that sort of thing they need to do, but... I can't, so right now, we allow it in our industrial zone, in our industrial park, or business park, I should say, slash industrial zone. But again, that's gonna be a big hit on our electrical, if, if, if it's only allowed there versus elsewhere in town.
Right. I think my biggest thing, too, is that we should allow farmers to use their land to have the, you know, these greenhouses, and is it, it's not only helping them, but it's also giving us revenue. I mean, this is pretty significant, 874,000, 1,003, 1.4. Those are some pretty significant revenue numbers that, I mean, I think I would like coming into our town.
The revenue sounds good. The, I, I think they still have to be indoor facilities, because, because of the, the odor and security. So I'm thinking more on a greenhouse line versus just open field grow.
Well, if we go back to when we did the original bylaws for cannabis, how many facilities, I, I know we had to, it couldn't be any greater than 20% of the retail liquor licenses in the town? That's all that there is in town? So does that mean that only one, or does?
We're talking grow facilities versus dispensaries. Dispensaries was only two.
Okay. Grow facilities are different.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
I think our town is so, it's on the smaller side, and population wise, we probably wouldn't need more than two dispensaries locally. Anyway, but I think the, the fact of the matter is, is people using, you know, being allowed to use their land for this, with revenue coming back into the town.
Yeah, if we're gonna propose it as an article to the town meeting, I think, I think we need to get some more information on greenhousing, greenhouses, how they're secured. We'd, we'd probably need a meeting with the Select Board to talk about revenue, you know, what would be a fair revenue.
Yeah, there's probably a primer, that the Select Board, probably just to get a little bit of knowledge on, you know, what the town is allowed to ask for in the host community agreement.
And I think that police and fire should be included, security and that kind of stuff, almost like a special permit.
Yeah, presumably, yeah, in your bylaw, any type of service, establishment would be, would require a special permit from the Planning Board. I think, you know, absent some of the language in, in some of the model, as well as in other communities, the security plan, you would rely on the Cannabis Control Commission, because they have to do their own permitting, and they're going to be getting, you know, the security, the odor, and they're gonna do their own review, and basically say, okay, town, does this comply with your local regulation? That's the only question that the Cannabis Control Commission asks. Do you have a host community agreement, and is, basically is the zoning compliant?
So would you say that the Cannabis Control Commission is, have the minimum standards, and the towns can supersede those to a more stringent level?
Yes and no. I mean, the minimum standards are still pretty strict, but, you know, there, there can be some additional scrutiny that the board can, that town can adopt, by which these particular projects would get reviewed. So, you know, where some community, like, you have here that the buffer between the cannabis establishment and a school or daycare is 500 feet. So that, that aligns with the Cannabis Control Commission, where that's the school or daycare or that type of educational establishment. Other communities have adopted a 500-foot buffer to a park, an open space. Some communities have adopted 500 feet from the cannabis facility to a home. So something like, you know, some additional buffering, or some additional distance between certain type of use at the cannabis establishment, has been adopted by some communities, depending on where it is located. Additionally, the requirement for what is submitted in the site, a special permit, you may want everything that's being submitted to the Cannabis Control Commission, as far as something for the board to review. And then you also have the ability to hire a peer reviewer to look at an odor plant, to look at a lighting plant, you know, electrical use plant, something like that, water usage.
Has, to your knowledge, has any of the, have there been any cannabis grow facilities that are on a vocational level? You know, kids in school?
Not to lie.
Such as, what is it, a Smith, not Smith, a...
Pathfinder?
Well, Pathfinder would be one, and...
I would think not.
I haven't heard anything.
Yeah, I didn't.
Because it's next to a school, it's attached to a school.
That's a, that's a valid point, yes.
So I think that because, I haven't heard anything with connections to schools.
Unless it was you masked, maybe.
There, I mean, so, you know, some communities have been identifying ways, especially if there is a farmer that, you know, wants to use their property for a small grow facility in an existing barn. We just went through a permitting process in the town of Lanford, where it is less than 5,000 square feet, and it's a personal grow, but they have some vendors that they're working with to, to sell product to. So, you know, they were permitted by the state under a micro business, and the board allowed micro businesses, or the town allowed micro businesses throughout town, just had to ensure that, you know, was able to address all of the things in the site plan.
So is the owner of the property allowed to lease to other individuals, yes?
Yeah, sure. Similar to any other type of use, the board can determine language. I'm not quite sure if, if there are towns that have limited that type of, you know, that you have to own the property.
It could be, it could be set up like a, like a solar field, you know, they're gonna come in and lease the property, they're gonna put the greenhouse up for you, they're gonna do all the, this, a company that gets formed specifically for, for generating these things can go to landowners and say, look, we'll, we'll give you X amount for a land lease, or whatever.
Right.
And, and quite frankly, I'd probably feel better about somebody that's got a track record of doing these things, you know, than, than just a pop-up, mom and pop, you know, doing it and trying to feel their way through the process, I guess, but I wouldn't be opposed, I wouldn't be opposed to it, I just, I don't know, what, what do you think the next step
Myself personally, I don't, I don't think that there's any need to jump yet. Nobody's jumped at the industrial area. There's been one person that approached the Board of Selectmen to petition the town, that individual did not gain enough signatures on their petition to bring it to town meeting. And if, if we procrastinate, which really isn't the right term, we'll be able to see what, like, these other two communities in the Pioneer Valley have developed, once the, once their establishments get going.
So you wanna table it?
That's me as a single member of the board.
I mean, my thoughts on it is, you know, a little bit different. I'm just looking at another revenue source to come into the town. And I mean, while there's no one knocking on our door, we've all spent a significant time looking over the bylaws and, you know, talking about, you know, making those changes, that I think, instead of tabling it, I think we should further the conversation, so this way, if someone does come to us, you know, we have, you know, those new bylaws in place. But, I mean, that's kind of my thought on it, is we've all spent this time and energy, and I, I'm, I'm pro-revenue, so I think that, and I want people to use their land the way that they wanna use it, especially for making money.
I, I do agree with the agricultural part. As two of us saw during the, the 2018 Cannabis Commission push, we had no idea what we were writing rules and regulations for.
Absolutely. It was very new.
And we had, that's right. And this way, if, if we go back to my way of thinking, if we let some of these other communities get their feet wet, find out what the good and the bad was, or what they should have done that they didn't do, use them as stepping stones, the revenue would be nice. Gonna have to figure out how many of these facilities you would have to, I would imagine, have to put a number on them within the, in the town.
I think they would just have to come before the board for a special permit, right?
Yeah. Right now, you allow it in those particular zones, so if someone were to come, you oversee a special permit process, and you have, you know, your site plan, your special permit standard, that you would measure this particular development. I think to Bob's point, there can be a question about how you, how much you limit, you know, those types of facilities in town, other towns have adopted a limit.
Other towns have?
Yes. Well, I haven't seen any for cultivation, but for dispensary or, yeah, they definitely have. East Hampton is one of them. But, yeah, I, the thing is, you currently allow for it, so it's, however, someone that wanted to build or, yeah, open a retail or a commercial grow would just go through a process, ensuring that they were in the industrial zone or the business park overlay for a grow facility, and then you only allow retail, commercial, and the general business zone, so, you know, that's the case.
Yeah, I think that's the, you know, in the industrial zone, I think that's wonderful, we do allow it, but again, just going back to that, you know, revenue for farmers, you know, we do have several farms in Granby, and they're already using their land for solar, things like that, just, it's just another use.
Jason?
Now, would they be able to come to us for a special permit if they weren't zoned in just the industrial?
Depends on how we set it up.
If they weren't. So that's, to that point, you know, I think moving forward, if maybe we did a workshop and discussed this a little further along, you know, and got a little more information and, you know... The thing is, if you look at the, the material that was from PBPC in 2018, there are so many different types of cannabis uses, and the state is going to be unrevealing standards for consumption, areas to consume, so like cafes. So, you know, not to say that Granby is going to be a place where a cafe will be, but there are towns that are now amending their previous zoning to allow for those, once those regulations come in. I think, you know, the conversation that the Select Board, I think, brought to the Planning Board was specific to a particular license that is issued by the Cannabis Control Commission, a micro business, which is something that the board or the town can increase the types of uses, based on the licenses that are provided by the state. It's very specific as to what the volume of product is for a micro business, and from my understanding, you know, the impact is still reviewed through the lens of any other marijuana establishment that's regulated by the Congress. So there would be a review of the security, there would be a review of the odor, review So, there would be a review of the security, there would be a review of the odor, review of their site plan. If the town had allowed for those types of uses, then you would oversee a special permit presumably for that. But right now, as, you know, the board is aware, the only uses that are allowed in town are the retail and the grow facility in the industrial zone.
So, thank you. So, I understand what Bob's saying. Would somebody else go out and go through the trials and tribulations of working through that piece of it? But by the time that happens and we decide to adopt it, we usually miss the bus. And in other words, in other words, they're already out there doing it and by the time we get our arms around the bylaw and present it, it's... They're already going up elsewhere. I think we've been asked to look at micro or smaller grow facilities. I think that would be a good place to start.
I agree.
I'd like to, if the town puts something together that the town may or may not approve, but if they approve it, we're open for business. And if a facility in Hoyoke decides, "You know what? It's been too costly to grow, to pay these electric bills, or Chicabe or some other place, let's start subcontracting to local farmers that allow it," right? So, now, the farmer's producing for somebody else, they're just growing it, you know what I mean? They're not, there could be things along those lines that all of a sudden start popping up. Now, I'm buying, you know, ten percent from this farmer, another fifteen from this guy and they're still small grow operations, probably more efficient than what they can do in the corporate world. It may be a trend where it goes that way and it's not a big impact to the town, but yet it increases some revenue and we are already, we're ready to go. We're advertising, hey, we're in front of it.
Because in Hoyoke, they're in huge old mill buildings that have, you know, crazy phase, different phase, electrical systems and antiquated and that just pulls so much, I mean...
I'm telling you, that's why they've focused on cities that produce their... Chicabe, even South Havley's got very inexpensive electric. Same thing with Hoyoke and Chicabe because of that.
South Havley doesn't permit cannabis.
No.
No, but what I'm saying is they produce electricity. They're on the, they're part of the... So, their electric is less. Hoyoke, you know, gas and electric, their utilities are pretty cheap there.
Chicabe, Westfield.
Exactly, for that, that's why these companies have focused on these areas.
So, I think for the board, what I can do is just continue, hopefully get in touch with them to learn of some examples. But, you know, the communities that have adopted standards for greenhouses, at least share them with the board, especially if the board is willing to look at outdoor grow.
Yeah, if you could, well, that's what I think we need to do is...
Yeah.
It's either, it's not more indoor growing, which, you know, like we've got it set up in the business park. I mean, if we're allowing green, if we decide to allow greenhouse growing in an agricultural environment with certain certain conditions, then we'd certainly allow a barn to be able to grow it. But I just don't see the, you know, there's got to be something in there about the amount of energy that you use too. We certainly don't want to be depleting what we're producing in this town from, you know what I mean? It's like, they're pushing EVs and there's not enough electricity to provide EV and everything else that they're trying to produce for. But, I'm not saying we have to put a bylaw in place and bring it to the town for approval for fifty acre grow facilities, it may sound along that line. But I think we can come up and say, "Look, you know, there's some micro, there's some standards here for two acre facility." I don't know what they are, three acres, I don't know what the threshold would be, but why not?
Just giving more opportunity for revenue.
Yeah, as long as it's, I'm all about, all about that as long as it, the revenue isn't detrimental to the environment or detrimental to the town's, you know, home values go down because of it, you know? We can limit it to a few to start with and see how it goes and...
I would be, I would be willing to listen.
That's the start, right? I mean, we're all learning about it. I mean, I think it's just learning together and seeing if it's a good fit.
And the town will decide whether or not they want it.
Exactly.
We bring, if it works out, we present something that's, you know, reasonable, not something that's going to turn the town upside down and let them decide whether it's something they want in their community or not. They can weigh out the pros and cons. If it comes to town, we could potentially generate X amount of revenue. Okay, so you're going to provide us with some more information on grow facilities and grow facilities or greenhouse facilities?
Yeah, so this was, I mean, one component of the research was that, but I am looking, yes, for the standards for those types of facilities.
Thanks, Ken.
How they've been impacting other smaller communities.
Nita has not responded whether or not she's coming.
Okay, well, with that being said, I'm ready to cut this meeting.
So, are we going to just make a motion for you to be able to sign on behalf of the board?
So, here's my question to our consultant here, Mr. Ken. This was a four-person decision. Can three people vote to have one signature on this?
It's an administrative task, so...
That's all I wanted to hear. Okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion that allows me to sign on behalf of the board for the decision.
I'll make a motion to have the chair of the planning board sign the special permit and site plan approval for Kim's Pet Resort LLC.
On behalf of the entire board?
On behalf of the entire board.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Do we have another second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I will sign. Do I sign this or you're going to...
I'll provide you with one single.
Okay, very good.
I'll do that tonight, because I have another planning board we need to attend to.
Okay. Okay, if there's no further discussion?
No.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Five forty-two, second.
List of seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.